Call the meeting to order, roll call please.
Mayor Rankin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Selaya.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Montano.
Here.
Councilmember Walter.
Here.
Councilmember Woolridge.
Here.
We have a quorum.
This time we'll stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Would you please bow your heads as I pray. Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself and the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings. This evening in our council meeting, I am asking that you graciously grant us the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times. A sense of welfare and true needs of our people. A keen thirst for justice and rightness. And confidence in doing what is good and fitting. In your name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. This is the first call to the public for comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff review a matter raised, and may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take any action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. This time I'll call Charles Smith. What's that?
Can he go right after me?
I don't have a slip from him, so...
Sorry, kid. Just hang out just for one second, alright? My name's Aaron Fuller. I'm 5493 East Demeter Drive, Florence, Arizona. Basically, I'd like to bring you aware of one thing. I noticed that there's been a lot of firefighters and police officers walking through the annexation neighborhoods, collecting votes. I've been doing a little research and looked at Title 16, which governs elections and electors, Arizona Revision Code 16-192 in particular. Actually, I'd like to read this to you. It's stated, "A, notwithstanding any other law, the state and other, and special taxing district, and any public agency, department, board, commission, committee, council, or authority, shall not spend or use public resources to influence an election, including the use or expenditure of monies, accounts, credit materials, equipment, building, facilities, vehicles, postage, telecommunications, computer hardware and software, webpages, and personnel, and any other thing of value or of public entity." Now, I think you guys know that I'm against the annexation. I haven't voted for it. I've actually gone door-to-door. The town has not paid me to go out and go door-to-door, but the town is actually paying firefighters and police officers, you know, to go out and do that. I've got pictures of the fire trucks in our district, and then I actually, I'm not going to play it for you right now, but I have a recording on my phone right now of my last conversation with the firefighters. I'm not going to name them, but a captain and two firefighters were out there. They said that it looked bad that they weren't in their district while they were on duty, and so that they brought in overtime firefighters to cover the town while they were out collecting votes. I think that this is highly illegal, and I think that it's actually worth a call to the assessors, you know, the county on this one, because this is against Arizona Revision Statute 16-192 directly. Just like to really think about what you're doing and holding a clean election. If you're truly going to win, win on a fair term. Don't win by cheating.
And I would ask you people to do the same thing.
Thank you, I will.
Tell the truth when you're putting out your information, because you have not been putting out the truth. I'm sorry, sir. Come up right now. Okay, come on up.
Mayor, can I clarify one thing for the record? It's not about any agenda item...
Please do, because again, again, it's misrepresentation of what we're doing, and they don't know the law, so go ahead.
The only thing that I want to clarify is that on elections, this gentleman is absolutely 100% correct. That is the law on elections. That's when you're going into a ballot and you're marking the ballot box. The town of Florence is not allowed to use any kind of financial resources to influence the outcome of an election. That is absolutely 100% true. The difference between an election and the collections of signatures is that the Arizona state law requires us to collect the signatures for citizens who may want to be incorporated, and it also requires us to send out notification. That is underneath statutory for annexation. Annexation is a collection of a petition and not a election, per se.
Mr. Manato, since the town's been criticized for this, do you have an opinion?
Well, yes, Mayor, thank you. I have looked at the same issue that Ms. Garcia was referring to, and the effort to collect the signatures of people on an annexation petition is to be distinguished from an election. This is not an election such as it was characterized by the gentleman who was reading the state law. And I agree with Ms. Garcia, if, in the context of a local election, if the town expended town resources to try to affect the results, that would be illegal, but it is important to understand the difference between an election and an annexation petition. They're governed by different rules.
Right. And I think every member of the council understands the policy about using municipal facilities or funds for each of our campaigns. I don't think that either one, any of us have ever violated that law.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council. My question is, I asked Ms. Garcia to actually pass you out a list of the questions I had, and these were questions in, oh, I'm sorry. I'm Charles Smith. My address is 5492 East Athena Road. My mail-in address is the same as Florence, AZ. My questions here pertaining as such, and I've given the council a list of questions that I had pertaining to that, and just to expedite things, I don't think I need to actually read these. In fact, because it asks you later on if you'd like to respond, you can do so, which is up to you anyway. So, we had some questions about using public servants, that is firefighters and policemen, and of course, we needed some clarification on that. And as such, we have given these questions to you guys to respond when or not, for the most part. And just briefly, and question number five, and it pertains to what Ms. Garcia was saying, is the town's position that using firefighters to circulate petitions is a legal and ethical means to push their annexation agenda? And she's somewhat answering that question. Right, Ms. Garcia?
We'll direct staff to take this list and get back to you.
Great, then. Thank you, sir.
But no, that was not what I was saying, but I'll explain it later.
Thank you.
Good evening. Denise Colart.
Denise Colart, Florence Gardens, in the city of, town of Florence. Mayor, council, town manager, I'm here on a completely different subject this evening. As you know, from my many times of getting up here and speaking, I am totally in favor of the project that's going on here west of the town hall. The library, the pools, and the sports fields. I've gone to many, many meetings, work-study sessions, council meetings, all three of the open houses that were held. Some of the people that got up here and spoke last week against it were at none of those meetings. I never saw any of them before. Then I saw some ridiculous letters in the paper this week stating that we have ours, and we don't want to have to pay for anybody else to have. And I think that's wrong. I have mine too at Florence Gardens. But that doesn't mean that I don't think the children, the youth, and everybody else in this town isn't deserving of what you guys are trying to do. I have advocated and advocated for this. I've gone up to cafes in the gardens. I've talked to people at my church about this. I'm tired of advocating and not seeing anything in the paper to counter all these ridiculous claims, like Art and Lyle just put in with absolutely ridiculous figures about what this is going to cost to run. I'm tired. I quit. I'm not advocating anymore. I hope you guys do the right thing here in the next couple of weeks, so that we have a library, and the pools, and the sports fields next summer. Thank you.
Denise, watch this week's paper. Tina? Is it Tiana or Tina? Tiana? Come forward, please. Tiana Gray, right?
Hi, my name is Tiana Gray, and my address is 5582 East Haven Avenue. And I just wanted to speak about, I had two officers come to my door with a clipboard, and they said they were there to collect a signature, and it felt a little intimidating to have officers show up on my door asking for my signature. And then the fire department showed up, and we told them, well, we told the police officers, no, we don't want to be annexed. Then the fire department showed up, I said, no, we don't want to be annexed, and they didn't really take no for an answer. They wanted to argue with me and ask me what all my reasons are. I don't think it really matters why. I don't want to be a part of Florence or be annexed. It doesn't matter. I said no. I don't know why it's up for debate. And it seems like the police, the fire department, they just won't take no for an answer, or Florence, you guys aren't taking no for an answer. How many times do I have to say no? The fire department came back to my house at least three times after I said no. I told the police officers no. I put on the ballot no. I crossed out, you know, my name and said that I didn't want to be part of Florence, and I'm still getting stuff on the mail regarding my signature to become part of Florence. I don't know why I'm being hassled so much, and it just feels kind of intimidating to have officers at my door, and the, you know, fire department keeps coming. I keep saying no. And I noticed when I pulled up into the parking lot, I couldn't really see the lines to even park, to see where the parking spots were. So, I don't know that I want to be a part of Florence, because it doesn't seem like you're taking care of your roads very well. That's all.
What was that last part? I didn't hear you.
When we came here, we were trying to find a parking spot, and you can't even see the lines on the road, and it just doesn't seem like you're taking care of your roads very well. So, I don't really want to be part of Florence because of that reason. It doesn't seem like you're taking care of the roads very well.
And a question for you, were they police officers, or were they reserves, or volunteers? Were the Florence volunteers?
They came in uniform and said they were the police, I thought. They never said...
Were they volunteers, Dan? They were volunteers. They weren't full-time police officers.
They look like police officers to me. They had their badge and full uniform on. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any other member of the public have anything they'd like to bring out and call the council, or call the public?
Hello, council and mayor. My name's Fred Redman. I live in Oasis at Magic Ranch. I am very much for annexation and have been for it since day one. I've been there for nine years in this oasis, and my personal thing is, I don't know what the law is about people going around knocking on doors, but I personally have gone around and knocked on doors convincing people to be for annexation. I honestly cannot understand why people are not for it. I've heard all kinds of discussions, and like some of the ladies before, I'm very frustrated because I believe most of it is slanted. I wouldn't say it's lies. I do not say that. But I do think it's slanted to some degree for anti-annexation, and I get very frustrated with seeing those kinds of propaganda that's going out. First thing is, for the firemen and the police, I have not had any at my door, but if I did, I'd be happy to talk to them, because I would hope that if we become annexed, that these people would be people I know, so that if I had any kind of issues in my community, I'd be able to talk to them, because I'd know them face-to-face. The other part is that talking, I apologize, I put these notes down while I was listening to everybody, but one of the things is, I do pay the fire protection. I have a 1,300 square foot house. I pay $386 a month, I mean, a year. And my proposed fee, if we become annexed, is $80. That's like $400. I, I mean, $300 that I save. I keep hearing these about franchise fees. The franchise fees go from like 2% to 5% on utilities. I don't know exactly what it is, but I can assure you that if you add up the phone, the electric, and all the other franchise fees, they don't come close to 300 bucks. And the other part that I have, and this is a genuine problem that I have, is that it looks like that I am supporting those people who are not paying the tax, so that they can have a fire department. And that frustrates me to know in that my money is going to pay for them to have a fire department, because that's a for-profit operation, and if people weren't paying that money, there would not be a fire department. And I keep hearing about this fire district, and everything I've looked into, it's going to cost more than I have with rural metro, and I know it's going to be more than what I have with the town of Florence. So, when I keep hearing all of this information, I get very, very frustrated that everybody keeps leaning into this kind of, I don't know, activities. And there's a lot of homeowners that work, and they come home and they'll have a beer, they pet their families or whatever, and then they go to sleep, and they wake up, and they don't have time to spend. I happen to be retired. I spend a lot of time, most of the council people in the city. I come down here all the time. I've only missed a couple of meetings here. I also go to the county meetings, and I watch what the county's doing. And I can assure you, I believe Florence, there's a whole lot more than the county does, just based on what I see by going to those council meetings. And, you know, there's another thing about the library and the aquatic park. Now, living where I am, I'm up closer to the Iron Horse side, because I'm way up on the west side, and it would be a long drive for me to come down here. But you guys in the town of Florence have been saving for something like 10 years to be able to have the money set aside to be able to do these things. And for somebody then to come in and be annexed now, and think that they ought to have an aquatic center up there, just blows my mind. We haven't even put any money into anything yet, and why would we want to have, you know, money from the central part of town come up and help us at this time? I think sometime in the future that might be appropriate, but not right now. So, I guess that I come down to that I'm just a volunteer. I'm very much for annexation, and I'd like to thank you for your time.
Thank you. And the council does appreciate the comments you received, understanding that everybody has its opinion, and it's their right to have it exposed. This time I'll close call to the public.
Item six, public hearings and presentations. Item 6A, public hearing for the submission of an application for fiscal year 2014 Community Development Block Grant, Regional Account, and a State Special Project, and discussion approval disapproval of Resolution Number 146914, a resolution of the town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, authorizing the submission of an application for the fiscal year 2014 State Community Development Block Grant Fund, certifying that said applications meet the community's previous identified housing and community development needs, and the requirements of the State CDBG program, and authorizing all actions necessary to implement and complete the activities outlined in said application. Mr. Farina?
Yes. Ernie Felice, or...
I didn't know if the finance director was going to introduce you.
Fine. Mayor Rankin, council members, this public hearing concerns the Community Block Grant State Special Project application for fiscal year 2014, and also the Regional Account application. The amounts to be applied for are $226,027 for the Regional Account Fund, and $300,000 for the State Special Project Fund. A little background, a public hearing was conducted last month, as required by the Arizona Department of Housing, to discuss potential projects for which the town could apply. At that hearing, the only viable project discussed for the two grant funds was owner-occupied housing rehabilitation. Town staff is proposing the housing rehabilitation project for selection by town council, because it represents the best opportunity to be awarded funding. It meets criteria for state and national priority and local need. It is an AOH HUD high housing priority, as well as being locally shovel-ready. Staff has created guidelines for this project that council has approved. We have obtained applications from 14 homeowners who wish to be part of this program. We estimate we will average, we will spend an average of $50,000 to repair each home, which would be guaranteed with a forgivable loan. Under the Regional Account, we want to repair at least four homes, and if we receive State Special Project Funds, we could repair an additional five homes. And I just wanted to let you know, we just received word late Friday that the town has been awarded $275,000 to repair five homes through the State Housing Fund. This hearing is now the last opportunity for the public to make any final comments regarding the proposed project, or to propose an additional project. Once the hearing is over, you will be asked to make a decision regarding the project that will be submitted to the state. As we have said throughout our public participation process, the town council makes the final decision regarding the application to be submitted. Therefore, Mayor Rankin, I ask that you open the public hearing for any final comments or any additional proposals by or from the public.
Does any member of the council have any questions, Ernie, before we open the public hearing? Hearing none, at this time I'll open the public hearing for submission of an application for fiscal year 2014 Community Development Grant. Does any member of the audience have anything they'd like to talk on, on this issue? CNNO movement, I'll close the public hearing.
Alright. And now I just ask that you adopt the resolution.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 1469-14 to conduct owner-occupied housing rehabilitation within the town of Florence.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 1469-14. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Presentation by the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce, recognizing the business of the month.
Good evening, Mayor, council, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jim Galoon. It's my honor to represent for the Greater Chamber of Commerce Selection Committee to present July's Business of the Month award. This recipient of this award must have demonstrated over the significant period of time dedication and their support for the Florence Chamber of Commerce. The board members believe that there are six qualities which brought us here. These qualities include professionalism, teamwork, expertise, passion, reliable, and loyalty. Ladies and gentlemen, please acknowledge July's Business of the Month to Mr. Matt Harrington, Golden Eagle Distributors.
Amen.
On behalf of Golden Eagle Distributors, just like to say thank you. We are a family-owned business, and we take great pride in giving back to the communities in which we serve, so thank you very much, and we plan to be here for a long time going forward.
Like your shirt.
Thank you.
Again, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. Thank you. I know that Golden Eagle does a lot around here, different organizations, and we really appreciate the work you do for us. Thanks for helping them out. Felice?
Item seven, consent. All items indicated by asterisks will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless the council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A, appointment of Connie Stevens to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board with a term to expire December 31, 2014. Item B, appointment of Robert Tapia to the Historic District Advisory Commission with a term to expire December 31, 2014. Approval of a change order number two for Well 3B Improvements Project in amount not to exceed $33,608.86. Item D, approval of the GIS Enterprise License Agreement renewal and award of the bid to ESRI in an amount not to exceed $27,425. Item E, approval of the purchase of Spillman Technologies' CompStat Management Dashboard and Community Dashboard in amount not to exceed $30,441. Item F, ratification of the Chamber of Commerce Special Event Liquor License to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licensing Control for their September 4, 2014 monthly business mixer. Item G, approval of the July 7 and July 21 Town Council Minutes. And item H, receive and file the following board and commission minutes. April 16, 2014 Joint Library Advisory Board Minutes. Mayor, members of council, that is your consent agenda for this evening.
Does any member of the council have anything they'd like taken off the consent agenda? Does any member of the public have anything they'd like taken off the consent agenda? CNNO movement, I need a motion?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as written. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item eight, item A, Resolution Number 1427-14. Discussion approval disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, approving the pre-annexation and development agreement with Smith's Food and Drug Centers, Inc., and Ohio Corporation, and authorizing the execution of such pre-annexation and development agreement. This is for annexation number 201301, Smith's Property. Mr. Eckoff?
Mayor, members of the council, I alluded to this development agreement coming to this meeting at the last, at the last council meeting, because we did the pre-annexation and development agreement for the areas outside of the red lines, which would be the inline shops and pad sites for the shopping center. We just couldn't get the Smiths or Fry's one on that agenda. So, we're coming forward. It's the same terms as you saw with the Barclay Properties, 10-year development agreement, commitment to not raise the impact fees during that period of time, and as soon as the market recovers adequately, Fry's has indicated a desire to locate their store here in the future.
Does any member of the council have any question or remark? Hearing none, we need a motion?
Make a motion to approve Resolution Number 1472-14.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 1472-14. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Come on down. Tell Fry's to get here in a hurry.
Yes, sir.
Item number B, Resolution Number 1475-14. Discussion approval disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, approving the pre-annexation and development agreement with General Hunt Properties, Inc., and Arizona Corporation, and authorizing execution of such pre-annexation and development agreement. Annexation number 201301, General Hunt Properties, Inc. Mr. Eckoff?
Mayor, members of the council, you'll note on this and the following three development agreements that these are, these are extremely short, straightforward development agreements related to properties that are held by General Hunt, Oasis Solid Waste LLC, the Club at Oasis LLC, and then Johnson Utilities LLC. All four separate entities, all related to Mr. Johnson, of course. All the properties serve their different purposes, whether they be for the golf course, the clubhouse, the solid waste, the transfer station... the solid waste, the transfer station that's out there, wastewater treatment facility, et cetera. The main purpose of these agreements, as I'm sure you've, you can ascertain, is that Mr. Johnson and, and the corporations at hand here just wanted to make sure that when they came into the town, that they were allowed to do the same uses on their property that they are allowed to do in the, in the county. Because they've had the properties developed for a while, because their, their PAD zoning is, is a little bit complex and a little bit cumbersome, they just wanted to make sure that what exactly was allowed by their zoning, which is, you see in Exhibit D, all those pages of uses that's allowed, just wanted to make sure that those uses would carry over into the county. And there is no discussion of impact fees, fee reductions, or anything like that to, to any extent in these agreements. I'd be happy to address the questions you may have.
Any member of the council have any question? Mark, one thing, does this comply with the county, or did you have to adapt something? Are we able, this is, those properties can be brought in and, and to what we're doing?
Yeah, those properties have been developed in, in such a manner that they are today for quite, for quite some time.
But I mean, dark code?
Absolutely, because in, because they will come in with the exact county that allows them to be there, county zoning that allows them to be there today. So, in this case, the comparable is essentially exact because of the PAD going to a PUD.
Okay. Any other question? Mayor None, I need a motion?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 1475-14, entering into a pre-annexation and development agreement with General Hunt Properties Incorporated.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 1475-14. Any other discussion? Mayor None, I call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item number C, Resolution Number 1476-14. Discussion approval/disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona approving the pre-annexation and development agreement with Oasis Solid Waste LLC and Arizona Limited Liability Company, and authorizing execution of such pre-annexation and development agreement. Annexation number 201301, Oasis Solid Waste LLC Properties. Mr. Eckoff?
Mayor, council, I, I think I've pretty much have spoken on all four. I'd be happy to address any questions you may have.
Any member of the court? Mayor None, I need a motion?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1476-14, entering into a pre-annexation development agreement with Oasis Solid Waste LLC.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 1476-14. Any other discussion? Mayor None, I call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item D, Resolution Number 1477-14. Discussion approval/disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona approving the pre-annexation and development agreement with The Club at Oasis LLC and Arizona Limited Liability Company, and authorizing the execution of such pre-annexation and development agreement. Annexation number 201301, The Club at Oasis LLC Property. Mr. Eckoff has already addressed you.
Does any member of the council have any question? CNNO, I need a motion?
Make a motion to approve Resolution Number 1477-14, entering into a pre-annexation development agreement, Club at Oasis LLC.
Second.
We have a motion and numerous seconds to adopt Resolution 1477-14. Any other discussion? Mayor None, I call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item E, Resolution Number 1478-14. Discussion approval/disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona approving the pre-annexation and development agreement with Johnson Utilities LLC and Arizona Limited Liability Company, and authorizing the execution of such pre-annexation development agreement. Annexation number 201301, Johnson Utilities LLC Property. Again, Mr. Eckoff has addressed you.
Does any member of the council have any question, Mark, on this? Mayor None, I need a motion?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1478-14, entering into a pre-annexation and development agreement with Johnson Utilities LLC.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 1478-14. Any other discussion? Mayor None, I call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item F, Ordinance Number 621-14. This is a first reading of ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, amending Chapter 32 of the Florence Town Code by adding Article 32, Section 32.200, establishing an arts and culture commission in the town of Florence. Ms. Evans?
Thank you. Mayor Rankin, members of the council, last May I gave a, a short briefing on a proposed public art program, and tonight I'm bringing to you a proposed ordinance to establish the program in Florence. And just wanted to give you a little background on the program goals. And really, the, the essence of the public art program is to instill a sense of place in Florence and to increase the quality of life for our residents and, and visitors. This, of course, is an important component of our economic development efforts. We, you know, want, everyone wants to have a nice place to, to live and visit, and we hope to also promote Florence as a destination for arts and culture. And by establishing the, the commission through this ordinance, it also gives additional opportunities for the public to become involved in the process. And there's an allocation of funds in the capital improvement plan budget for this year. And typically, communities will allocate up to 1% of the total cost of construction costs on, on capital improvement project plans or projects per year. And in Florence, that amount is approximately $100,000 that could be available for public art projects. So, with the ordinance that's before you, the ordinance will create a five-member commission, and it will also designate one alternate for the commission in case there's an unplanned resignation or something else happens to a commission member. The ordinance, well, actually, one of the responsibilities of the, the Arts and Culture Commission would be to create an annual public art project plan, and that will delineate the goals and priorities for pub, the public art program each year. And then the commission would also be responsible for implementing the annual plan. And over and above the, the annual work plan, there's many opportunities out there to engage in other types of arts and culture projects. So, the commission, if it wishes, and if it's the wish of the town council, they could look into other potential projects and, and partners to increase and enhance arts in our So, with the implementation or the approval of the arts ordinance, we could then solicit applications for commission members, and we were looking at a month to two-month process to do that. And then staff panel can be convened to review the applications and forward the recommendations to the council, and then the council would ultimately appoint the commission members. And then once that is done, then we would probably have a brief education period to bring commission members up to speed on their responsibilities, and then quickly turn to drafting the annual public art project plan. So, that is the Florence Public Art Program in a nutshell, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Tommy, you were one, brought this, been spearheading this.
I, I, I think this is the right direction for the town. We've, we hear it all the time for, from our citizens, there's not really anything in Florence, you know, what, what is Florence? We don't, we're, we're looking for that identity, and I think this, this program will, will help give us some identity, a, a place to, to come and actually see things other than just the residents on, on your way into work and on your way out of, out from work. So, you know, we're, we're, we're gonna get bigger as a town. We need something that, that gives us that, that identity from when you cross over the municipal boundaries of Coolidge into Florence or Santan into Florence. We want people to, when they're coming into town, to be able to realize that we're in Florence because we can see these little components scattered throughout the community. So, I think this is a really outstanding program and, and very optimistic it'll do well.
Here are the members of the council having... This time I'll open the public hearing. Some public hearings were anything to do with this ordinance on our art. CNNO, I'll close the public hearing. And Tommy, remind you that after January, when you're a member of, of society again without a target on your back, there may be a position open on that committee.
I, I'm being strongly recruited, so I think I'll probably be there.
I, I think that's a good idea, sir. Mayor None, go on.
Item G, Ordinance Number 622-114. A first reading of an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, amending Title IX, General Regulations by Amending and Deleting and Replacing Chapter 90, Animals and Defining Penalties. Chief Hughes?
Mayor, council members, Mr. Montoya. What we did is we took a look at currently what we're doing. We have a, a intergovernmental agreement with the, with the county who comes out and takes care of our animal control issues, our dog issues. And we pay them on a monthly basis. And what I did is looked at some of the calls for service that we have, like dogs at large, the dogs that are on leashes, vicious dogs, or untagged animals, or barking dogs. Those are calls that the officers can handle and write a citation for. What's been happening in the past is we've called animal control out, take some time to get here, or even if they do get here, if it's the evening, we're paying a premium price. This way, the officers can actually write a citation and cite it into our own municipal court and be handled internally within the town of Florence. It just makes it a little easier, and we're also at the same time cutting down on cost by having the county involved. The county will still keep us, and, and they do a great job on the big things, like we're, we're not equipped to do impounds, but the county will continue to do those and do all the things when we, when we take a dog. But this just gives us a little quicker in dealing with some of the problem issues.
Any member of the council have any question for the chief? Tommy?
Will we be collecting fees on this? Are the town, will we be collecting fees from this?
Yes. We, we actually mirror them to what the county would be. It'll be handled as a civil violation, and instead of going to the county, it will actually come before our municipal court.
Do we have any numbers on, on projected impact for our municipal court on that yet?
You know, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't check to see how many citations the county had written before I came. It will have some impact. I'm not sure how many citations were written for that.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, will any of our officers be trained to capture any dogs at large or to protect the public?
We actually have catch poles now, and if the dogs aren't too vicious, we leave it up to the officers to see if they can, if they can do it quickly without endangering themselves, we'll do it. If we get a real vicious dog, we will, our officers still stand by, but they will call the county, and it, we will actually house them in our kill area at, at the PD now. A lot of times, we'll get a dog that's barking or maybe seems to be a little vicious, and if we can get them with a catch poles, we'll hold them until the county comes on and, and can come pick them up.
Any others? This is the first reading of the ordinance, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Item H, discussion approval/disapproval of authorizing the purchase of one 2015 water truck for Public Works Department from Freightliners of Arizona in amount not to exceed $132,017. Mr. Taylor?
Mayor, members of the council, we recommend the purchase of this truck from Freightliner Arizona to replace our 28-year-old worn-out water truck. We appreciate your approval of this.
Morris, you haven't been here a long time. You have to speak into the mic.
You didn't hear that?
No. Would you repeat it?
Sorry. Mayor, members of the council, we are seeking your approval to purchase a new water truck for the Public Works Department to replace the 28-year-old water truck that we have now that's basically worn out. The three bids look like this Freightliner Arizona would be a good bid, and I appreciate your approval.
Any question for more? Any motion?
Make a motion to approve the purchase of one 2015 water truck for the Public Works Department from Freightliner of Arizona of the amount not to exceed $132,017.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to purchase a 2015 water truck for Public Works not to exceed $132,017. Any other discussion? If not, I...
It'll last for 28 years, that's a good deal. Make sure it lasts another, this one, 28 years. That would be nice.
Need a mo, okay, we need a motion? Do we have it? And we got, we had the second, and I read it, and we're ready to take the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
At this time, item I has been removed from the agenda, and you will see that at a future council meeting. We will move on to item J, discussion approval/disapproval of a contract with M.R. Tanner for improvements on Butte Road between Central Park Avenue and Plant Road in an amount not to exceed $109,842.79. Mr. Taylor?
Mayor, members of the council, as you know, the Butte Avenue west of Centennial out to Plant Road is quite skinny. It's only 19 feet wide at the widest and quite substandard, and this contract would improve the road and get a road width that would be safe for the traveling public and also match the plant road that we just built. And we're seeking your approval of this for M.R. Tanner to do this.
Does any member of the council have any question?
I agree with him. It's, it's overdue, really, that road. It's, there's no shoulder or anything, so I think it's a good project.
Has additional right-of-way been procured?
Additional right-of-way, excuse me, additional right-of-way is not necessary at this time. We've got the full 66 feet in that area. It's just we have a really skinny road.
Yeah. There are no discussion at this time during this project, putting cross sidewalks in down there?
No, there's, has not been any discussion at this time for doing sidewalks down there.
Okay. Any other question?
I'll make a motion to approve a contract of, with M.R. Tanner for improvements on Butte Avenue between Centennial Park Avenue and Plant Road in an amount not to exceed $109,842.79.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve a contract with M.R. Tanner for improvements to Butte Avenue not to exceed $109,842.79. Any other discussion? Mayor None, I call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Manager, report?
Mayor, member of the council, underneath the manager's report, we'd like to give you an update on the annexations and the annexation process. First off, we'd like to say that we had hoped that we had been very respectful of the homeowner's wishes when they had decided to say no and cross out their name on the petition. The way that we've been doing that is we have a spreadsheet. When we get one in, we mark it off, and they're removed from our mailing list. We did, however, about halfway through the process, we did send out updates to let them know we were about at 34, 37% so that they would know where we were. The reason why we sent those out was because we wanted to make sure that every person in that area has the ability to know how we're proceeding and, and how their home is going to be affected, whether they voted for it or were not voting for it, or in this case, signing off on a petition. The other thing we want to say is that with the Arizona Farms annexation, we are at 57% and that is proceeding to a September second council meeting for first reading, or I'm sorry, second reading. We've already done the first reading on the annexation, so that is going to proceed to the September second council meeting for the second reading. The Magic Ranch annexation is, we're believing that it's at 51%. We are going back in, and we are doing a second tally... We are going back in, and we are doing a second tally to make sure that both the assessed valuation is correct and that the signature petitions are correct. We've had a number of individuals who came in and talked to staff, and they are not in favor of annexation. We've called in various department heads to meet with people, and staff has been very respectful. And as part of that process, we have let them know that regardless of whether this annexation moves forward or not, that the town will continue to be their neighbor. And if they, if the annexation does not move forward, we will continue to be their neighbor and have good working relations. If the annexation does move forward, we said we would provide, try to provide the best services as we possibly can. We have had people come in and withdraw their signatures. We've talked to them and explained their reasonings for why they wanted to withdraw. We gave them back their petitions, and we did remove them from both the signature count and the assessed value. So when that comes before council, those signatures will not be included. And we did give every person back their original signature. So those will not be counted.
Thank you. The manager report that I saw, I don't know if any have had a chance to see the report that came out on different items this week from Charles. Well, there's a lot of things on there I got questions on and that we need to, I'm very concerned about adding additional personnel to staff without having us understand what the need is for it. I think sometimes we can get top-heavy. And I think we're headed that way with adding all these other people. Now, we're not that busy. And I think that we really need to take a strong look at adding additional administrative personnel before we go forward. It may be budgeted, but is it really needed? And there's some other projects on there that caught my eye for the first time. I think that we need to open up lines of communication just a little bit bigger between all of us. You need to be, you know, we've got to have some information on these things. And I'll, I'll, I'll try to get back to the league of what I'm talking about with you on it. But I do think that we need to communicate better with some, before we hire anybody, even though you're authorized to do it, we're the ones that takes the heat for that. So before we do anything, I don't know if any other members of the council has anything that they saw on there that, I don't have my list with me. But there are quite a few things I do have questions about. Tara?
I would have appreciated if it was attached in with the agenda and not put in the mailbox in the future when there's manager reports, if you can make sure that they're on there.
Councilmember Walters, mayor, council, those are the weekly reports. So those ones, council requested to be put in your boxes.
Okay. But on the agenda, it said manager's report, but there was nothing there.
That is correct, councilmember Walters. We are putting that on every agenda in case something comes up that we need to brief council at the last moment.
I like the, I like that as well. I like seeing that on the agenda, too. Because sometimes I'll, I won't, I'll forget to pick up my mail, and I'll get it the day of the meeting. And I have a manager's report in my mailbox, but I don't have enough time to read it right before the meeting, so.
Let's work on that. Try to develop a system for the meetings.
Absolutely.
If we have to, there's two weeks between meetings, you put two, two reports in there. Any other questions on manager's report? Hearing none, I'll open a second call to the public. Anybody from the public have anything they'd like to speak on? Seeing a movement, I'll call, close to the public, close the call to the public. Call to the council. Tara?
I just want to encourage everybody out there to make sure that you vote. We have an important election coming up on August twenty-sixth, especially focusing on our home rule option. It is important to us because it allows us to maintain our budget and move forward providing the services that are necessary. Thank you.
I'll go along with that. It gives us flexibility, is what it does. It, if we don't have home rule, it would really be tough for the town to operate in a efficient manner. So it's, it's not like it's going to, we're going to just spend money like crazy. We still can't do that. I mean, but we need that flexibility. If we go by the formula that the state has, we, we wouldn't be able to operate as we are now. We need that. And then I'd like to say that it was, we lost one of our businessmen here in town this past week, Andy Salia. He had Mo's Barber Shop, a great guy. He lost his battle with cancer. And I just wanted to give him a little recognition there because he was a great businessman.
Gary?
Just a reminder to citizens that it is illegal to tamper with campaign signs. So for whoever took my signs, unless you, if you haven't already trashed them, or unless you want to keep them for a souvenir, if you would just throw those back in my yard, I'd appreciate it.
Tom?
Yeah, also mentioning the home rule, it's very important that the town has the ability to use the funding that it has available in order to operate. Without the home rule, we have money sitting there without the ability to spend it on the services that we provide to you. Another thing, I'm looking at this, this article that came out, I'm not sure if everybody's had an opportunity to look at it. Arizona's top cities and Florence is at the top of this as far as cities on the rise for potential growth. And that ties into the things that we're trying to do for the town here as far as bringing the parks, the water park, the library, the pool, the rec center. With, with, you know, people need to realize that in order to get the amenities that we want, like the grocery stores and the shopping stores and stuff like that, we need population to support it. And it's, it's not going to come by us sitting here not providing some of the shiny things that attract these people to the town. These amenities that we're trying to bring to the town, the pool, the, the arts program and things like that, those are the kind of things that I know that if I'm looking at it as, at a place to, to have my home, I'm looking for these things, you know? We're, we need these things to attract the population that brings the amenities to where our town, where our citizens are asking for. That's pretty much all I have.
Ruben?
Yeah, I'd like to bring it to the community's attention that here recently, Pinal County lost their, their contract or gave up the contract with ICE, Immigration Custom Enforcement, for contracted beds for detainees being housed in the Pinal County Adult Detention Center. A big importance about it is now that we've lost the contract, that means eleven million dollars are being, what won't be gained into the community as revenue. But now, it's going to be shared through the CCA facilities in Eloy and also here in Florence. The concerns that come into play is that the detainees that we did house at that time were high-risk or maximum custody detainees. Now they're moved over here to the CCA facility, and that facility was never designed for maximum custody or high risk. So they're housing them there as well as in Eloy. So the concern I see with that is there may be an increase in assaults or other crimes within that facility, which is going to put a burden on our law enforcement here as well as a concern for our community. I mean, you're looking at detainees that are high-risk have been in other facilities and other state facilities for murder, for armed robbery, for sexual assault, for other heinous crimes. And now they're housed in a private facility. The state of Arizona does not have any regulations for, for private prisons. And so here we are, looking at this and saying, you know, if there's a crime committed over there, they conduct their own investigations by themselves. It's not being done by the public or by our law enforcement. And when it does occur, the taxpayers of Florence and Pinal County have the burden of paying those. And that's something we have to look at. I've talked to the town manager with the assistance of the attorney to say, what are we going to do about this? Should we develop an ordinance? Or should we look at something to say, maybe we need to do a memo of understanding with ICE and say, we will not allow this to occur in our facility or facilities in our community. But that's always been a concern of mine, is we can't control Arizona by statutes because we approve it. Those are things that are set up for state inmates, for federal inmates, and for locals. But here we have a private prison, and that's a concern that I look at to say, what are we going to do as a community to prevent this? Because ICE won't tell us what their actual crimes are. And now we have a facility accepting them when their facility can't handle them. That's what I get.
Tom?
Not this evening.
The only thing I'd like to say in conclusion, twenty-sixth of next week is the election. For all of those that have not voted, very important, if you take a look at the ballot, the reason that we're doing it on this is because the state law changed. The town's elections are down at the very bottom of the ballot. Proposition four hundred is even below the election for council. The people you elect will be representing you. Make sure you go to the polls and vote, and vote on four hundred also. Need a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We adjourn.